Smiling faces out there. It's great to see. I'm sure everybody's here, just curiosity for how a council meeting goes, I'm sure. No, I guess not. Alright. So, I'd start with a roll call, please.
Alderman Spaghetti.
Present.
Alderman Talonair.
Here.
Alderman Parker.
Here.
Alderman Ship.
For the last time, here.
Alderman Genin. Alderman Clark, absent. Alderman Mayberry, absent. Mayor Tomes.
Here.
You have a quorum.
We will do the pledge allegiance and then stay standing for a moment of silence, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Item number five.
Minutes of the April 22nd, 2019 meeting.
Moved to approve as printed.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Item number six.
Minutes of the executive session of April 22nd, 2019.
Moved to approve the executive session minutes.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. We have update. Got a couple items here. Here's a fun one coming up, and everybody can join us for this one also. Rock Island Unplugged. The city of Rock Island is holding the second installment of Rock Island Unplugged, Thursday, this Thursday, May 16th, at the Establishment, which is at 220 19th Street, downtown Rock Island, from 5:30 to 7:30. Rock Island Unplugged is an informal, yet structured event that gives Rock Island citizens direct access to city officials. Myself, city manager, Randy Tweet, and all the directors from every city department will be on hand. Its purpose is to initiate and conduct an open dialogue about current city happenings in the setting outside the confines of City Hall. The doors will open at 5:30 PM. The panel discussions will begin at 6:00. Orderes and non-alcoholic beverages will be provided to attendees. A cash bar will also be available. So please come down, enjoy, ask questions, and see what's happening.
Mayor, could I interject something about that? I want people to understand that this is very much like a citywide ward meeting. We had individual ward meetings and had small attendances. Sometimes there was more staff than audience there. So I would encourage everybody to come, bring your questions, and besides the mayor and the city manager, several aldermen, I'm sure, will be present as well.
Good, good comment. Thank you. Citizen of the Year. Do you know someone that deserves to be recognized for what they do for the community? If so, this is your opportunity to nominate them for the 2019 Citizen of the Year Awards. Sponsored by myself, the city council, there are seven categories for Rock Island citizens. There's the business, professional, education, individual, city employee, organization, and youth. There is a special category for someone that does not live in Rock Island but has contributed to the good of the community. This person or organization is not eligible for the overall Citizen of the Year Award, but may be nominated as an honorary Citizen of the Year. To learn more about nominate and nominate someone, you can go to www.rigov.org/COY. The deadline for receiving nominations is June 17th. Seventh, excuse me. I'll get some glasses. June 7th. So that's the end of that. So now we have number eight. Present, oops, go ahead.
Presentation of appreciation plaque to Friends of Douglas Park.
Is there somebody out yet? John, if you want to come up and anybody? But as you know, come on up there, that's fine, I just, but as you know, there are a lot of historical ties to the great Douglas Park in Rock Island. It has hosted to, it hosts to horse racing, beginning of the NFL Football League, Men's Fast Pitch Softball World Series, Seventy Sickers Six, gee, Merry Christmas, Seventy Sickers Semi-Pro Baseball Little League and Legion Baseball, and a host of park and recreation programs. Three years ago, the Park and Recreation Department and the Friends of Douglas Park developed a very successful public-private partnership to revitalize Douglas Park. This partnership has resulted in over $1.2 million raised and put back into the park, and they're not done yet. The city of Rock Island would like to present the Friends of Douglas Park with a plaque in honor of our appreciation for all of the work that has been, that has been done for the betterment of Douglas Park and the city of Rock Island.
Here's a little plaque. You bet. Thank you. Appreciate very much your efforts that you've been doing.
You guys are classing up to join over this way.
Alright, alright, here we go. One, two, three. Two, three. Perfect. Thanks a lot. Congratulations.
Hello, everyone. If you haven't been by Douglas Park, I strongly urge you to take a look, even if it was last year. Go back down there. There's been a lot happening, a lot more to happen. The place looks fantastic. And it's only going to get better. So, thank you for this and hope to see you all down there, or at least stop by and take a look at what's going on down there. It's really revitalizing that part of town. Thank you.
I didn't mention, I wanted to, now, not only they raised that money, but they've also been down there doing, sweating it out, doing the physical work also. A lot of them have been down there. So it's, it's been money and time and promoting it. So thank you very much for that. Alright, item number eight or nine.
Presentation of the 2018 Rock Island Historic Preservation Awards.
Hello, my name is Martin Bush. I'm the president of the Rock Island Preservation Society. I'd like to thank the council and Mayor Tomes for allowing us this opportunity to present our Historic Preservation Awards in celebration of Historic Preservation Month. The Historic Preservation Awards are intended to recognize and commend those individuals and groups who have worked to preserve and restore historic structures in our community. The awards are given primarily for exterior improvements that were completed in the previous year, 2018 in this case. This year, we are presenting five Historic Preservation Awards, one certificate of recognition, and four special recognitions. Recipients, as you are announced, please come forward to receive your award and then remain in the front for a group picture after all of the awards have been presented. The first Historic Preservation Award goes to Jean and Jody Zueffel for their properties at 1906 and 1918 7th Avenue. This award recognizes the extensive restoration of the landmark historic Potter House and Cottage. The home's stucco exterior was repaired and painted in colors reflected on a historic postcard. The cottage received extensive clapboard repair and replacement. Aluminum store windows in the cottage were removed and are being replaced by wood. And finally, a more recent driveway from 7th Avenue was removed, leaving only the historic access from the alley and from 19th Street. Congratulations. The second Preservation Award goes to Michael and Jessica Matherley from 803 20th Street. When they purchased this home in 2012, it had been vacant and neglected for at least 50 years. Pardon me, 50 years. The Matherleys undertook extensive renovation, and it is now their family home. A newer masonry office building on 8th Avenue was removed and a two-story carriage house was reconstructed. A later addition to the house rear was removed and replaced with a brick addition, and extensive exterior renovation ensued. A finishing touch was a transparent metal fence similar to those used historically in the neighborhood. Congratulations. The third Preservation Award goes to Daryl and Cynthia Empen of 830 22nd Street. Since purchasing the home, exterior restoration has been extensive, including removing multiple layers of exterior paint and repainting. The leaking original porch gutters were removed and replaced with copper gutters. Recently, deteriorated, deteriorated hardboard siding from the garage was removed and replaced with salvaged clapboard that matches the landmarked house. Salvaged historic windows were also added to the garage. Congratulations to the Empens. The next Preservation Award goes to PTM Properties of Muscatine, Iowa, for their house at 836 20th Street. Although this house was unveiled some 20 years ago, long-term vacancy caused significant deterioration of the exterior. The owner undertook extensive restoration that included repair and replacement of the rotted and damaged clapboard. New painting completed the work. The award is being accepted by Alex Mealy, son of Patrick Mealy of PTM Properties. Congratulations to them. The final Preservation Award goes to Juan and Maura Vasquez from their property, for their property, at 1402 26th Street. The Vasquez family unveiled this vintage home by removing the shingle siding to reveal the original clapboard. This was repaired and replaced as needed, and then painted an appropriate color. It is a highlight that is visible from 14th Avenue. Congratulations to them. I don't believe they're here tonight. Your certificate of recognition is being presented to John Grip, the director of the Rock Island Parks Department. Under John's leadership, funding was provided to rebuild the chimney of the original Hallberg Carriage House and the brick entry columns below the hill. The Friends of Hallberg is part of a public-private partnership with the city, assisted in the project. Thank you, John. Moving on to the special recognitions, the first special recognition goes as well to the Friends of Douglas Park, Kevin Corrigan representing them, and to John Grip of the Rock Island Parks Department. Only a few years ago, the historic Douglas Park was in a grave state of disrepair. It was then that a nonprofit organization, the Friends of Douglas Park, was formed to promote the park and advocate for its preservation. The work of this group, in conjunction with the Rock Island Parks Department, has made significant improvements to the park. Now, it is again being used for community athletic events with a new ball field, concession stand, and parking lot already completed. Other improvements are planned, including restoration and reuse of the historic fire station. Congratulations. The second special recognition goes to the city of Rock Island and Mayor Mike Tomes. A fountain is a bittiful thing, but when it doesn't have water, the beauty is compromised. The tiered fountains that embraced the Centennial Bridge still look lovely, but no water had flowed through them for years. Under Mayor Tomes' leadership, the fountains were restored and once again are a welcome entrance to the historic bridge. Congratulations. The third special recognition goes to Bob Yap for his hosting of a window restoration workshop. As a way to help some friends, Bob offered an extensive two-day workshop to rebuild all the historic wood windows in their home, which was about two dozen. During the workshop, he showed the participants the techniques and proper tools to use to make professional repairs. The cost of the workshop was also very reasonable due to contributions from the Broadway Historic District. Accepting the award tonight for Bob is Wendy Rowan. Congratulations. The final Special Recognition Award goes to Steve Schroeder for the continued maintenance of the mid-century modern building used to run his insurance business at 3424 18th Avenue. The building built by Steve's father in 1958 features simple, clean lines, a low-pitched roof with wide eaves and numerous windows. Over the years, the Schroders have meticulously maintained the office inside and out. This year is also historic for the Schroeder Insurance Company as they celebrate their 100th year in business. Congratulations to them for both of these achievements. That concludes our awards presentation. Thank you all, and again congratulate the recipients.
Very good. Thank you.
Third back, left side. Right side of the back.
Alright, all wonderful things. Great accomplishments. Item number 10.
Proclamation declaring the week of May 19th through May 25th, 2019 is National Public Works Week. Proclamation, whereas, public works services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, and whereas, the support of and understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public works systems and programs such as water, sewers, streets and highways, public buildings, and solid waste collection. And whereas, the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services. And whereas, the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of public works officials. And whereas, the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform.
Now therefore, I, Mike Tomes, mayor of the city of Rock Island, do hereby proclaim the week of May 19th through May 25th, 2019 as National Public Works Week. In the city of Rock Island, and call upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works and to recognize the contributions which public works officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. Thank you. Alright. Item number 11.
A special ordinance granting a special use permit at 1406, 1412, and 1416 6th Avenue.
Moved to consider, suspend the rules and pass the ordinance.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Not, roll call, please.
Alderman Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Genin.
Aye.
Five ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item number 12.
A special ordinance establishing a handicap parking space at 1527 29 and 1/2 Avenue Street.
Moved to consider, suspend the rules and pass the ordinance.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Genin.
Aye.
Five ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item 13.
A special ordinance establishing a handicap parking space at 830 21st Street.
Moved to consider, suspend the rules and pass the ordinance.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Genin. Five ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item 13.
A special ordinance establishing a handicap parking space at 506 6th Street.
Motion consider, suspend the rules, pass the ordinance.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Genin.
Aye.
Five ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item 15.
A resolution approving an amended employment agreement with the city manager and authorizing the mayor to execute the contract documents.
Move to adopt the resolution.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
Just for clarification, John, would you come up and explain how we arrived at that figure as we discussed on the phone today?
Where the 3.66% comes from is basically the 1.66% that was given to non-affiliated employees at the start of the new fiscal year, and 2% is basically for the mayor.
Thank you. I just want to make that clear to everybody.
Yeah, and I just want to say, you know, obviously, we had the performance review conversation, not in light of the public, because that is a privilege that we have as the council to discuss employee performance, and with our city manager being our top staff employee, I was really happy to have a robust conversation with my colleagues. And I think it's, I think the results speak for themselves that folks have a lot more trust and access and optimism about this city. And a lot of that comes from the city manager and your ability to work well with the council and with the mayor. And in all the years I've been connected with the city, Randy, I know you've always had this city's best interests at heart, and I thank you for your service. It's a tireless job. You know, every time something's happening, that's stressful, dangerous, important, boring, exciting, you're pretty much right there on the front lines of it. So, thank you for your service to this city.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Genin.
Aye.
Five ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item 16.
A resolution supporting the city of Rock Island local gas tax revenue be used for the maintenance and improvement of Rock Island city streets.
Move to adopt the resolution.
Second.
It's a tie.
Most senior.
Give it to Steve.
In age or council time?
Service.
Service.
Alright, so we got first and second. Any discussion?
Yes, I would like to first just read the resolution for the public that don't have the handy-dandy hyperlink that we have available. Uh-oh, if it opens up on my, okay, here we go. Whereas the citizens of Rock Island travel the city's streets every day, whereas the annual budget of the city of Rock Island for the past three years has included a reduction in funding for street maintenance and street improvement projects, whereas the current amount budgeted for street maintenance and street improvements is not sufficient to maintain the streets in a condition acceptable to the residents or the city of Rock Island, whereas the city of Rock Island collects approximately $500,000 per year in local gas tax revenue that could be directed towards street maintenance and improvements, whereas this revenue could make a significant positive impact on the condition of city streets. Whereas, the city council recognizes that diverting this revenue towards street maintenance and improvements will create a gap in general fund revenue that will be made up through cost reductions or additional revenue. Whereas, the condition of city streets is of utmost importance to the city of Rock Island. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Rock Island City Council supports diverting 100% of the local gas tax revenue to the maintenance and improvements of Rock Island city streets. So, I brought this idea to my colleagues here on city council in response to a number of concerns and complaints, frankly, that I've fielded from constituents, to give the public some background here. So, the city currently gets about $500,000 in gas tax revenue that we tack on to gas sales here in the city of Rock Island. And while that revenue goes to the general fund and does support, generally speaking, public works, like funding the salaries of public and works employees that are going to go out there and fill potholes and things like that, what this is saying is that this is going to be half a million dollars for contracted street repair, like when a city hires a construction company to do a major street improvement, like what we're seeing on 18th Avenue and 38th Street right now. So, in response to the chorus of concerns that I have fielded about the condition of our streets and recognizing that we want to have good public appearance and obviously good useful condition of our roads, I am requesting that my colleagues join me in supporting this resolution. At the request of city staff, I did include the recognition that that money is in the general fund right now, and we need that money in the general fund. So, when this council, or I guess the incoming council, does our budget process this year, we will have to consider this very issue of, do we cut services in the general fund? Do we raise revenue alternatively to make up that difference? So, it's a very real, it's a reality that we are going to have to face. So, I appreciate the consideration of my colleagues. I appreciate my constituents reaching out to me about this very issue. And I hope that, moving forward, we will be able to do more street improvements for citizens. And also, frankly, we need more than a half a million dollars worth of work too, right? So, this is the first step in a process. Thank you very much.
Alright. Roll call. Oh, you got something to say?
Just a question. Was this added to the agenda?
Yes, it was, and that's why it's a little different than what I got.
I don't have anything at all.
It's on, it's on the internet and it's out there.
I don't care if it's on the internet. I don't have it in my packet. Just want to make a note of that.
Okay.
It was done late Friday afternoon.
Alright, we need a roll call. Yep, you're fine.
Alderman Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Genin.
Aye.
Five ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item 17.
Claims. A through C. A, report from the Human Resources Department regarding payment in the amount of $18,269.94 to David Morrison of Rock Island, Illinois for legal services rendered from March 4th, 2019 through April 30th, 2019. B, report from the Public Works Department regarding payment number one in the amount of $89,043.80 to Green Space Associates of Davenport, Iowa for the 2019 sod replacement program for services provided from January 1st, 2019 through April 19th, 2019. And C, report from the Public Works Department regarding payment in the amount of $22,725 to Xylem DeWating Solutions Incorporated of Chicago, Illinois for the rental of pumps during the flood for services provided from March 13th through April 9th, 2019.
Move to accept the reports and authorize payment as recommended for claims items A through C.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Aye.
Genin.
Aye.
Five ayes, no nays. Motion carried. And the second group, D through F. D. Report from the Public Works Department regarding payment in the amount of $17,148.70 to Miller Trucking and Excavating Company of Silvis, Illinois for an emergency water main repair at 2810 Fifth Avenue. E. Report from the Public Works Department regarding payment in the amount of $11,027.58 to Langman Construction Incorporated of Rock Island, Illinois for an emergency water main repair on 27th Avenue and 9th Street. And F. Report from the Public Works Department regarding payment in the amount of $12,154.14 to Langman Construction Incorporated of Rock Island, Illinois for an emergency water main repair on 35th Street and 7th Avenue.
Move to accept the reports and authorize payment as recommended for claims items D through F.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
I will be recusing myself from this vote due to the nature of my employment.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talon Air.
Yes.
Ship.
Aye.
Genin.
Aye.
Four ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item 18.
Claims for the weeks of April 19th through April 25th in the amount of $825,491.14. April 26th through May 2nd in the amount of $280,193.40. And May 3rd through May 9th in the amount of $752,738.05. And payroll for the weeks of April 8th, 2019 through April 21st, 2019 in the amount of $1,490,235.09. And April 22nd, 2019 through May 5th, 2019 in the amount of $1,511,533.17.
Who do allow the claims and the payroll?
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talon Air.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Genin.
Aye.
Five ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item 19.
Report from the Community and Economic Development Department regarding an intergovernmental agreement with the cities of Moline and Davenport for the completion of the 2020-2025 Housing Needs Assessment.
Move to approve the intergovernmental agreement as recommended and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement subject to minor city attorney modifications.
Second. Moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talon Air.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Genin.
Aye.
Five ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item 20.
Report from the Community and Economic Development Department regarding a consent to assignment of the redevelopment agreement with Second Avenue Investment Group Incorporated to IH Mississippi Valley Credit Union for the renovation of the property located at 1709 Second Avenue.
Motion to approve the consent to assignment of the redevelopment agreement as recommended and authorized by the city manager and execute the agreement subject to minor city attorney minor modifications.
Second. Moved in second. Any discussion? Once again, this is a great development downtown, renovating the existing building, retail sales. It's a good project.
This is Ms. Bermane's, correct?
Yes. Yep, expanding her business. Roll call, please.
Alderman Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talon Air.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Genin.
Aye.
Five ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item 21.
Report from the Finance Department regarding an adjustment to the calendar year 2019 budget, increasing the Downtown Tiff Fund 201 expenditures by $100,000 in order to comply with the executed agreement with Coffee Break Restaurant.
Move to approve the budget adjustment as recommended.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
This is for QC Coffee and Pancake House?
Yeah, 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 just adjusting the budget. We've agreed on the deal before, just the budget issue.
Alderman Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talon Air.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Genin.
Aye.
Five ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item 22.
Report from the city attorney regarding procedural rules for city council meetings.
Move to consider this procedural rules as recommended.
Second.
All right, any discussion?
Thank you very much to city staff, city clerk for doing this. I've been asking about it for a while.
Two years, bud.
Big deal.
No, it's been good.
I appreciate it. And I hope the citizens of Rock Island who don't have to wait here for four hours for our meeting to get over to say something. I appreciate it, too.
Yeah, just to, just to be clear, so what, what's going to happen now is that the public will have the option to speak at the start of the meeting as opposed to the end of the meeting. Want to clarify?
Yes, after the final vote is taken next week.
Correct.
By the new council.
Oh, yeah, not tonight.
Yeah.
No, I think people were ready to jump out of their seats here. No, but, and I think that, again, as Alderman Parker said, you know, for me, I know you took the lead on this and I appreciate that. It really seems to me to strongly suggest another step forward in promoting positive citizen engagement. I know another change that had happened here was the issue of the prayer before council, and we were involved in changing that because, as it's well-known, the city is, you know, they're a very diverse resident population, a plurality of religions. And for folks who may have felt that there was a preference towards Judeo-Christian tradition here, and now we celebrate and enjoy together a moment of silence for reflection on whatever's on our hearts and minds at that point, which I think is a really great turn in the right direction that government is of, by, and for the people, and that they can come here, feel safe, and they don't have to wait sometimes two hours. Because at the same time with us changing the schedule, not meeting every week, the meetings are longer. So, folks would have to wait here even longer. So, this is just a really smart move and happy to see it adopted while we're still up here.
Well, the way I remember it, when we had four meetings a month, meetings were only a half hour and people are in and out and everybody's at home. We weren't, we weren't here two and a half or three hours.
That's right.
So, you could always go back to meeting four times a month and giving people more time to be here, making it more convenient for the citizen, positive citizen engagement.
Well, that, yeah, that could be for the new council to decide.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Okay. Roll call, please.
This is the old regime now.
Hold back there, PJ sitting back there.
Alderman Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talon Air.
Certainly.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Genin.
Aye.
Five ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item 23.
Report from the city clerk regarding a request from QC Pride Incorporated for a date change of their QC Unity Pride Parade to June 22nd, 2019 due to the flooding in Davenport.
Move to approve the date change for the parade as recommended and adopt the revised resolution.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talon Air.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Genin.
Aye.
Five ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item 24. Other business and public comment. If there's anything for the city council at this point?
I have a comment. I just like, want to thank Steve and Josh for their service. They provided a very interesting and lively conversation many of the times that I've been sitting here. And especially to Josh, I want to say, never say this is for the last time, because 20 years from now, you might decide to come back.
Good point. Good point.
James did.
Yeah. Take it from him.
Well, I, I would like to say a little bit, I, I hope everyone up here has enjoyed me being here as much as I've enjoyed all of them. Yes, we do have differences of opinion, but that doesn't make us enemies. It just makes us different. And there are some differences that will never be reconciled, and, and that's okay. And I want to thank everyone with a heartfelt thank you for being a part of my life, and I've enjoyed all of this more than you'll ever understand. Thank you. I, uh...
Permit you to five minutes.
I, I've said, I have said so much up here.
It's an understatement.
I think I've covered it all. I needed about four years to get it all out. No, but I, you know, I just want to say that it's really been an incredible experience for me to, you know, have, you know, my first step into this role was back in 2011. And some people may not remember that I ran then. And man, was I young. I mean, I was really young. I was like 22 years old. And I look back at those photos now and I'm like, holy cow. And, and, you know, I'm really grateful that I didn't win the first time I ran because I wasn't ready. In the four years that I had, after I lost the first time, being able to get engaged with the city through the Neighborhood Association and the Changing Faces Initiative and to, you know, to meet so many people connected to the nonprofit world, when I was working for United Way at the time, and all of that really helped informed, inform me of the values of the city and to really understand the people who lived here. And over time, understanding that I was one of those people too. I wasn't someone who just came here from McHenry anymore. I live here, went to college here, I have my wife and daughter here and a home. And all of that's happened over these years and it's just been incredible. And, you know, it's, you know, a single, a single term up here in office is four years. And that, you know, there's a lot that changes from start to finish with that. And I, I'm just really, really grateful for where the city's at now, four years later from when I started. Because the second time I ran, for me, it really felt like it was a call to action, because I felt like the city was losing something in terms of its connection with its citizens. And, you know, that can happen in any city, any level of government in this country, where we become disconnected from the people who send us here and give us the, the tax treasury and the authority to set rules and to govern, whatever level of government it is. It's always important to remember that we work together as a community, and we should make decisions that are, for the most part, inclusive, that aren't kept secret. And I hope that, you know, I, there were a lot of struggles for me when I first got elected. It was very difficult to experience and that, you know, there were calls to my employer and there were threats to cut me off from information because I, I came on board with a very different mindset. And I'm really happy that after, after what's about to happen here, you know, this is going to be a, basically a brand-new city council. And brand-new city manager, a new mayor, a new clerk, new finance director, new public works director. I mean, we, there's just been so much really positive change in this city over the past four years. And I feel like we're, at the same time, going back to our roots of this, you know, this Rock Island community, while at the same time, understanding we've got real challenges in the future for growth, and we need to work hard to attract businesses and talent, but we need to do so in a way that fits for us. And that may not be the national mold of, you know, big-box development or whatever it is, but it needs to work for Rock Island, and it needs to be transparent, and we need to be able to afford it. I am extremely grateful for this, the, for the voters from the sixth ward who put their trust in me to, to have, who have, you know, to have sent me here and to give me that opportunity. I know many of them individually. I don't know if I've met everyone who voted for me, but I just want to say to them, you know, thank you for your trust, because it is a tremendous amount of trust that your voters put into you to come up here. And, you know, as, as Steve said, you know, this always hasn't been a place of agreement, and I think that's been really great. And I really do feel like, at this point...
Jim said it.
Oh, Jim said, that's right. Well, you said too, something like that. But to an extent, I really feel like Rock Island has emerged right now as one of the most stable local governments in the Quad Cities. And I really feel like we're poised to capitalize on that. And that is really freaking exciting. And I'm really glad and, and excited for the new aldermen who are going to be coming up here from the second ward and fourth ward and Mr. Poles, who's going to be here next council meeting for the sixth ward. New perspectives, new ideas, new talent, new connections. And they're going to have a great city manager and a mayor and a clerk, a city attorney to work with. And so, for my colleagues who will be up here, I wish you the best. Call on me if you need assistance or help, or if you want someone to run an idea by. I do want to also thank the other aldermen I worked with in the first half of my term, Alderman Foley, Alderman Hodl, and the late and great Charles Austin. They were a tremendous group of people to work with as well. And I learned a lot from them, and we worked through areas of friction to become really good friends and good colleagues and to move the city forward. And that's what it's all about, City of Rock Island. So, thank you, everybody.
And I want to say thank you to both of you for serving, being public servants. It's not an easy task to take on when you're out in the public. Sometimes people don't understand what all goes on behind the scenes and something, you know, the grief you have to take at times. But so, but thank you for serving in a time away from your families. That means a lot to not only this council, but the citizens of Rock Island. And I know each one of you put your heart into it. So, thank you very much for that commitment.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Now, there's some people I believe that signed up to speak tonight in the back podium there. We have the opportunity before we continue on the, with the new council. Chief, I put you in. I do know there's a group of people from Wildwood that, I'm not sure if everybody signed up or several. Come on, come on up, that's fine. No, you gotta, you gotta, you can state your name and city and...
My name is Cheryl Eckerman, and I'm a resident of Rock Island. Mr. Mayor and city council members, thank you for allowing us time on your meeting agenda to present our petition for pavement replacement on our street. For the benefit of all present, please permit me to read the preamble to our petition and the petition. The preamble reads as follows. The only access to homes along Wildwood Drive from the corner of Wildwood Drive and Thornwood Court to the end of Wildwood Drive is via Wildwood Drive. During the past years, this street has gradually deteriorated to a hazardous state. As shown in the included photos, many large sections of pavement are either completely missing or contain fragments of previous patching attempts. This damage is so extensive that complete pavement replacement is needed. As citizens of Rock Island, we are concerned not only for our safety and the safety of those who come to our homes, but also for the image of our community. And the petition reads as follows. We, the undersigned, as residents of Rock Island, Illinois, living along Wildwood Drive from the corner of Wildwood Drive and Thornwood Court to the end of Wildwood Drive, are petitioning the mayor and city council for a top priority city budget item for street pavement replacement within the upcoming fiscal budgeting year. As you can see from your handouts, this petition was signed by 24 residents representing 90% of the homes on our street. The only remaining homes are a bank-owned property and a family still wintering in Florida. Also attached to your handouts are photos of some of the damage on Wildwood Drive. Since many places have damage across the entire street, you cannot avoid driving over holes. This requires us to creep along the street, hoping not to damage our vehicles or get rear-ended by approaching cars. This evening, we received some information that was compiled by one of our neighbors. She accessed the county real estate tax records for the 21 homes on Wildwood Drive and calculated a total for 2018 taxes owed. That total is $268,807. We feel it is a privilege to live in the very nice neighborhood of Wildwood. And while we don't feel we are uniquely privileged to better streets, this total demonstrates our commitment to pay our fair share for city services. We are aware that there are other streets needing repair in Rock Island. We are also aware that the city must work with allotted and limited funds to handle these repairs. However, none of us want to be known as the least desirable Quad City town in which to live. However, none of us want to be known as the least desirable Quad City town in which to live. And none of us want to drive on dangerous streets. Thank you again for your time and consideration, and we look forward to future street improvements."
Thank you very much. And thank you for taking time and coming forth and doing the petition. So, appreciating everybody's coming here. So, and it means a lot. All right? There any other, anybody else would like to come forward? Any other comments out there?
Motion to adjourn. Si ney, de ney.
Second.
Second. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We'll now do the swearing-in of the new council members.
Oh, you know.
All right. I get to take a break and Judith's got to work.
Aye, Randy Hurt.
Having been elected to the office of the second ward alderman...
Having been elected to the office of second ward alderman...
In the city of Rock Island...
In the city of Rock Island...
In the county of Rock Island, aforesaid...
In the county of Rock Island, aforesaid...
Do solemnly affirm...
Do solemnly affirm...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois...
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois...
And that I will faithfully discharge...
And that I will faithfully discharge...
The duties of the office of alderman...
The duties of the office of alderman...
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Aye, Jenny Swanson.
Having been elected to the office of fourth ward alderwoman...
Having been elected to the office of fourth ward alderwoman...
In the city of Rock Island...
In the city of Rock Island...
In the county of Rock Island, aforesaid...
In the county of Rock Island, aforesaid...
Do solemnly affirm...
Do solemnly affirm...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois...
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois...
And that I will faithfully discharge...
And that I will faithfully discharge...
The duties of the office of alderwoman...
The duties of the office of alderwoman...
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Two elected officials in one household, Josh. There's a guy.
Trouble.
Yes, exactly. I must say, it's a pleasure to have more diversity up in front also here.
Thank you.
So, thank you for helping with that.
Thank you.
Okay, the A older and female. All right. I do. Would like to call the council meeting to order. If we could have a roll call, please.
Alderman Spagatus...
Present.
Alderwoman Swanson...
Present.
Alderman Parker...
Here.
Alderman Geenan...
Here.
Alderman Clark, absent. Alderman Hurt...
Here.
Mayor Tomes...
Here.
You have a quorum.
Outstanding. So, first line of duty we have here is item 27.
Who did that?
Nope, 28. I'm sorry, I'm looking at the written deal again and it's off by one. I apologize. 28. No, no, you're fine. 28.
Mayor Tomes will close the regular meeting and open a public hearing on a request from Nazarene Okter for a waiver of the signature requirement to secure a liquor license at 2730 Fifth Avenue.
All right. Close the meeting. And is anybody here that would, about this? Nazarene, oh, come on up forward, please. Can you come up? You can speak into the microphone there and tell a little bit about what your project or what it is.
Thank you. Everybody is to support me. Is, everybody is, thank you very much. Is blessed.
Hi.
This is my manager.
Ms. Nazarene is the owner of the Fifth Avenue Bar. I would be the manager. My name is Kelly Thomas. And basically, we're just asking for a request for a liquor license for like a mixed genre-type establishment with music. I don't know. I'm so sorry. I'm so nervous.
That's fine. You're fine. Just relax and you're fine.
Okay. And that's basically it.
So, this would be a local tavern or bar, or whatever you want to call it, correct? And you plan on having some music and that sort of thing, correct? It's not a convenience store or anything else like that?
No, no.
Okay.
Just like a little neighborhood bar. Pretty much from what I understand, the type of establishment it was when it was Murphy's Tab or Murphy's Bar, whatever.
Cavern and whatever. Yep. Okay. All right. And I understand that they're doing some renovations to the building.
Correct.
And so, this would not open until it meets all the requirements for building inspections, anyone else?
Absolutely.
Okay. I just want to, I guess, before I let the council know and maybe Reddit and everyone else, this is for a request to waive the signatures for the petition. It's not approving the license. It's just a request to waive the signatures. They couldn't get quite all the signatures, so it's for that. And then, potentially just a recommendation to the liquor commissioner whether to do this or not. So, that's what the vote is about for those new ones. All right. Anything else you'd like to speak about at this point or?
No.
Okay. I need to ask if there's anybody out there that opposes this. Is there anybody out there that opposes they should have a liquor license? Is there anyone that, in favor of them having a liquor license? Anybody want to speak about them in favor?
Mike, I would like just to ask a question. Ma'am, do you know who went out and got, obtained the signatures? Were you involved in getting the signatures?
Yes. I was involved in the door-to-door. And then, of course, there's property owners in the area that I couldn't get signatures in person from. So, I did get their addresses and I sent certified requests through the mail. And with still no response.
There's a lot of rental properties around you.
Correct.
That's why it's difficult to find the signatures. Is that what you're saying?
And for those people that you did get the signatures from, it's my understanding that you explained to them what you're explaining to us here tonight, that this was a bar situation and not a convenience store and so forth, right? So, they were aware of what you were asking and that you were basically looking to establish the Murphy's location as a local tavern, just like it had been or has been, as long as I can remember?
Yes. Actually, I think my mother worked at Murphy's.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you. Take a seat. Unless anybody's got any questions. I, probably, anybody got any questions up?
Mayor, one other thing I'd just like to add is that the city clerk also did send a letter out also explaining that they were asking for a, I think it's a Class E license. And a copy of that letter went out on April 26 of 2019, along with the letter that apparently they went above and beyond and sent out certified mail as well. So, I just wanted to clarify that for the record.
And they asked for extended hours to 2:00, 2:00 a.m.?
Yes.
Okay. If there's no other questions, then I do need to do a roll call, please. Oops, excuse me. I need to close the meeting.
Motion.
First, I need to close the meeting.
Right.
So, I'll close the open meeting, hearing, and reconvene the regular meeting.
I would move to waive the signature requirement as requested and to recommend to the mayor and liquor commissioner to approve the liquor license.
Second.
Move to second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Spagatus...
Yes.
Alderwoman Swanson...
Yes.
Alderman Parker...
Aye.
Alderman Geenan...
Aye.
Alderman Hurt...
Yes.
Five ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
Thank you. Item 29.
Mayor Tomes will close the regular meeting and open a public hearing on a request from Ryan Arguello for the waiver of the signature requirement to secure a liquor license at 1722 Second Avenue.
Close the regular meeting and open a public hearing? Is, Chris, I think we're up here to talk about the establishment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Alderman Parker. So, we did do our due diligence. As you know, the district has many, many businesses around us. So, it's tough to tackle everybody, especially since a lot of them are owned by companies outside of the Quad Cities. As far as our bar goes, it will be a country bar. I know there's been a country bar there in the past. It did pretty well and ended up probably shut down due to other things, not making money. We are going to bring live bands in. I know our opening weekend, we have $18,700 spent on bands in our first three days, including Sunday night, May 26th, which we're bringing in Jared Neiman, who about four years ago played the Mississippi Valley Fair. He's got a few number-one hits. We're definitely investing in live entertainment, kind of like Ripco. They have a lot of concerts there. We also are putting a lot of games in. Pool tables, dartboards, Jenga, buck hunter, among other games as well. We'd like to make this a bar where 20-something-year-olds can come enjoy country music and people like some of the silver foxes up here that I'm talking to can also enjoy. We're going to provide line dance lessons for beginners, also for intermediate and advanced throughout the week as well. And we will do also karaoke and trivia on Wednesday nights.
Correct.
Would this, would this be the time where I can tell them where I want to invest in, into the community as well?
Sure.
I know we had talked in your office.
Yes.
A couple of the things is, I'm very big on the district as a whole. I'm 40 years old. I've been going to the district for 20 years. I know it pretty well inside and out. And I want the district to flourish, but I believe we have to do this as a team. So, I have ideas that I've met with Kyle from the Daiquiri Factory and talked about. I think all the establishments, like the Circa 21 people, even like the restaurants. I put a commercial that I made for the mayor once. We need to all get invested and let the community know exactly what the district has to offer this summer and try to bring people back down here earlier in the evening. I think if we all come together and market ourselves as one, that we can make the district flourish again. And the second thing is, I'm a big humanitarian. I love to give back. And so, every Friday, a portion of our cover charge from the door, no matter how much we charge, is going to go back to a nonprofit organization. So, this is where you guys could help me out as well. I have a handful of nonprofits that have contacted me that need help, but you guys would know more than I would. Maybe there's some that need more help than others. And so, every week, we'll be cutting a check to a local nonprofit to give back. And this will probably be realistically between 20 and 30,000 this year, just on the portion on Friday night's proceeds to help benefit the community and local nonprofits.
Also have a mechanical bull, if anybody wishes to try that.
I did bring that back yesterday from Chicago, so it's up.
Not me, but I cherish my back, but, and my humility. You got any questions?
Yes, sir. First of all, thank you for investing in Rock Island. I read your entire application and your business plan. It's quite impressive. The only question I have is, and I didn't see this addressed in detail, but what security plans do you have for inside and outside?
Sure, so, um...
And let me just say, the only reason I'm asking that question to you is because of the size of your operation and the number of people that you're going to draw there.
Correct. So, I actually cut my teeth on security. Years and years ago, Lolly's was an establishment here. I bounced there. I bounced at a bar called O'Malley's, which is now the Smoking Dog. I had many years of security. That's actually where I cut my teeth before becoming the GM, become, becoming a bar owner now for, you know, a little while. And so, I have, I mean, I could draw it up for you guys, but I have different sections. We rotate. We also have plenty of security cameras. You know, we'll be training them. They'll be getting tip certified, you know, how to talk. Matter of fact, one of the questions I have when I'm interviewing a bouncer is, when is appropriate time to get physical? And that's because, really, it's just the last resort. And so, the guys that I have are, I'm not going to lie, they're all pretty country. They're all pretty civilized and level-headed, which is very important with the security staff. And so, I believe just from being, bouncing and being in the bar industry for 20 years, I have a good handle on that. Also, we have 10 security cameras getting put in. So, we'll have, you know, everything filmed as well that's going outside on the patio area and inside as well. But I do have a plan where, you know, we have different zones. We also have radios with an earpiece. So, everybody will be alerted. And also, they know too that not one person is supposed to go diffuse a situation. So, every hour, I'll have one person roaming, and myself will have an earpiece in as well. So, if there is a situation, then there'll be a minimum of two to three people that are going to be there to try to talk somebody down before anything physical has to happen.
Very good. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other question?
Yep.
On that same line of thinking with security, will you also be employing off-duty Rock Island police officers in addition to your house security that you are looking to put in place?
So, to be very honest with you, you know, I went to Red Rodeo, which is what it was before in the past when it was extremely busy. And just knowing industries and knowing demographics of people that go there, you know, they had 700 people in there without hardly any problems. And so, to be frank with you, honestly, I don't have that plan originally. But if something was to happen where we were getting a rougher crowd in there for some reason, which I don't believe we will, then that would be measures that we would take.
Okay. Thank you.
I just want to say, just like what Alderman Spagatus is saying, thank you very much. I sat down with you at Black Sheep and we talked about this. I'm very excited about your investment, your experience, and not only as managing a bar, but also a public relations or advertising, right? I am very much looking forward to working with you for the entire downtown, the district area. Definitely, we'll be talking to Jason Wilde, our communications guy. And then, regarding nonprofits, be sure to connect with Chandler, our Community and Economic Development Director. He oversees different parts of the city that coordinates a lot with nonprofits, so.
Agreed.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I need to ask if there's anybody out there that opposes this? Is there anybody out there opposes this liquor license? Is there anybody out there that is support of this that would like to speak? Is there anybody out there that is support of this that would like to speak? Anybody out there would support? Hearing none, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
And close the public meeting and open a regular meeting. Entertainer motion.
Move to waive the signature requirement as requested and move to recommend to the mayor slash liquor commissioner to approve the liquor license.
Second.
Move to second. Any further discussion?
Yes, I forgot. I've said this before, just like the public comment thing. But maybe with new council members, let's revisit our liquor license procedure. It seems bureaucratic and unnecessary for people to come to the city council because they can't get signatures for their liquor license petition, simply because they don't live in the area, they can't get ahold of them. We should update the process so by which, if you've sent out certified mail letters and two weeks has gone by and they still have not received any response, that should just, by default, count as a signature. I know that, Chris, you're on a deadline. You're opening Memorial Day weekend or something, right? You got, what did you say, eighteen thousand dollars worth of just performers? Right, so this business owner is investing a lot of money to have an awesome event in downtown Rock Island. And here we are gumming up, potentially delaying this process by making him try to get ahold of business owners in Florida or something, right? Property owners in Florida. I have voiced several recommendations to update our liquor license process here in the city of Rock Island, and this is another one of them. Please, let's update things.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Spagatus.
Yes.
Swanson.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Hurt.
Yes.
Five ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item number thirty.
Report from the Public Works Department regarding a request from the Broadway Historic District Association for the installation of banners on city-owned and Mid-American Energy-owned poles by the Public Works Department.
Move to approve the execution of the banner installation as recommended and authorize the Public Works Department to execute the quote "license for banners" end quote permit with Mid-American Energy.
Second.
Move to second. Any discussion?
Clarification. I don't know if Mike or Randy, whoever's the best person to answer this. But, once we sign this with Mid-American, will we be able to use this agreement for any Mid-American-owned poles moving forward if we want to do banners in Keystone or anywhere else in the city? Or is this only for the ones in Broadway that we're proposing to do right now?
I would read it as just for Broadway.
Okay.
So we would have to do another agreement for another location.
Okay.
Because they actually physically go out and look at the area that we're going to install those areas. If a map is provided to them.
Sure.
So, it's specific, I'm sorry.
No problem. And then, you've been coordinating with the Broadway Historic District Association to get these banners installed?
Myself and Luke Van Lanning.
Okay. And then I know we're coming to CED to try to get some money back from the city to pay for half of it, right? So, thank you very much.
That changes my vote.
Neighborhoods, it's all about neighborhoods.
Actually, I was going to make a comment about the fact that the report says Broadway Historic Association has agreed to furnish the mounting brackets and banners, which that's the only cost involved. And then the Public Works Department is providing a limited amount of labor to mount them on the poles.
Yep. Yeah, the Broadway Historic District Association has fundraisers and trivia nights and stuff like that to pay for the banners. With the matching grant that we started in the city this past year to match up to three thousand or something like that, I don't remember the exact number, but Broadway is planning on taking advantage of that opportunity, so.
Do we have any size restrictions on banners?
I don't know. Anybody from staff know?
I think there was some information in the report. Go ahead, Randy.
Yeah, it's just like case by case, we look at. There's no set standard, no.
Okay, no other discussion? We need a roll call, please.
Alderman Spagatus.
Yes.
Swanson.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Hurt.
Yes.
Five ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item thirty-one.
Report from the mayor regarding an appointment to the Water Pollution Control Board and reappointments to the Liquor Commission, Water Pollution Control Board, and the Plumbing Code Board of Appeals.
Move to approve the appointment and reappointments as recommended.
Second.
Seconded. Any discussion? What I've done in the past is let people know who they are. Blaine McCoy for Liquor Commission, reappointment. An appointment, new appointment, Joel Thompson with Water Pollution Control Board. Claridale just left, she, her son. Reappointment of Bill Haas and Bob Motz for the water pollution. It's a reappointment. And then for the plumbing code, it's a number of reappointments. Eric DeCook, Stan Hints, Brett Husser, Butch Motzer, Alan Spears, Brian Thorne, and Rakesha Tom? Is for the plumbing code. Oh, I guess the names are up there.
There they are.
Here we go. So, roll call, please. Oh, no, excuse me. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, item thirty-two.
Report from the city clerk regarding requests from the Rock Island Moose Lodge for outdoor entertainment with sound amplification and the outdoor consumption of alcohol in the fenced-in parking lot for a fundraising event on Saturday, June eighth, two thousand nineteen, from three PM to seven PM at forty-four ten Ninth Street.
Move to approve the request as recommended, subject to complying with all liquor license regulations and subject to being shut down early if complaints are received.
Second.
Move to second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Spagatus.
Yes.
Swanson.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Hurt.
Yes.
Five ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item thirty-three.
Report from the city clerk regarding requests from Igor's Bistro for outdoor entertainment with sound amplification and the outdoor consumption of alcohol of food in the fenced-in parking lot for an event on Friday, May thirty-first, two thousand nineteen, from five PM to nine PM at thirty fifty-five Thirty-Eighth Street.
Motion to approve the requests as recommended, subject to complying with all liquor license regulations and subject to being shut down early if complaints are received.
Second.
Move to second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Spagatus.
Yes.
Swanson.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Hurt.
Yes.
Five ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
Okay. Other business? Anybody wish to come forth? Comments up in the audience? Council?
Yes, James. Just briefly, the Eleventh Street cleanup Saturday was very successful in spite of a little wet weather. A lot of people came out and cleaned up the corridor and enjoyed a short picnic with brats and hot dogs at Douglas Park afterwards. Thanks to everybody who participated. You made a great difference in the appearance.
It made a great difference. The weather was, I drove down the street and I saw a lot of people out there, but it was raining. So, thank you.
Want to take the opportunity to welcome aboard our new alderpeople. It's exciting. Looking forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Yep. All right, item number thirty-five.
Executive session, five ILCS one twenty, section two, C eleven. Litigation, when an action against, affecting, or on behalf of the particular public body has been filed and is pending before a court or administrative tribunal, or when the public body finds that an action is probable or imminent, in which case the basis for the finding shall be recorded and entered into the minutes of the closed meeting.
Move to go into executive session for the accepted, I'm sorry, for the exception cited.
Second.
Move to second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Spagatus.
Yes.
Swanson.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Geenan.
Aye.
Hurt.
Yes.
Five ayes, no nays. Motion carried.